Lincoln Berry School Board Annual Regular Meeting of Tuesday, November the 5th. You'll please stand for the invitation by Mrs. Wiley, all those in favor, and Mr. David Ferguson.
Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you for this day. We give you glory, we give you honor, we give you praise. We just ask that you would be with us in this need, Father God, as we make decisions for our district and for our children, Father God. We pray that you would lead us in everything that we do, Father God, and that everything that we do in this district will receive your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Salute please.
Congratulations to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wiley and Mr. Ferguson, is this woman, is she in the still tonight, that she will not be here? Everybody else is here. Okay, you've had a chance to review the agenda. Any corrections or changes or additions?
Nothing from the public, I'm going to have to prove it as printed.
Okay, any comment from the public, questions? All right, motion by all the anchors that we approved the agenda as printed, seconded by Mike Farmore, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Also, you have the chance to review the minutes of the regular session of October the 1st. Any correction, changes of that, same clerical? Motion by Dr. Gillette, seconded by Susan Wiley, that we adopt the minutes as printed. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving into reports, E-rate, Ms. Debbie Fender.
Thank you. I wanted to give you an update on our plans for the 2021 E-rate application. For the past couple of weeks, we have been assessing our needs and projecting what our needs will be. Seth, our network administrator, is here tonight, and I appreciate his knowledge and expertise in projecting what our needs would be over our network during the 2021 school year. As I said, we've assessed our needs, and currently, as of today, we have a rough draft of our, I think it's 33 pages, of our proposal that we plan to post. We're going to review it and go through it with a fine tooth comb, and hopefully submit or release our RFP by November 8th, or somewhere in there. We plan to have a pre-bid meeting toward the end of November, with inquiry period during December, and hopefully to have our proposals in mid-January, so that we can then score them and determine the vendor of choice for our network needs during the 2021 school year. And with that, we would hope to bring for you during the February board meeting, or possibly March, February preferably, to meet the E-rate closing, which is during the month of March, with bring before you a vendor to approve for the 2021 school year. On our proposal, we are currently requesting wireless access points, switches, firewall, caching server, wiring and installation, of course, as well as basic maintenance and support. Just wanted to share an update with you about the upcoming E-rate application. Any questions or concerns? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, now, Dr. Lewis.
If you'll notice, the revised question report that you got, it just shows a location change. That is a location change for food service resignation, but the rest of the report is one candidate retirement, one candidate resignation, two candidate recommendations, two bus operator recommendations, two custodian maintenance retirements, one food service resignation, and three food service points of letters.
Thank you very much for this report. As usual, we appreciate what you do for us. Any question, Dr. Lewis? All right. Construction update, Mr. Payton.
Okay, sir. Hi, Seth. Okay, let's start with the parking lot that we're in the process of constructing, St. Edward High School. You remember, it's an empty space, concrete parking lot on the west side of the school. These pictures, this one over here was taken before the work actually started. There were a lot of trees on the lot that had to be removed. At one time, there was a little house, right here. You can see some of the concrete dry out, and there was all types of plumbing, septic tanks, and whatever, wherever houses are. All that had to be removed. So, that's what the lot originally looked like there. Over here, the reason this picture is here, I hope I don't have to come back next quarter meeting, but there's a problem right here that we discovered, that nobody knew anything about. When the power company put this power line, three phase in for the church, their new building, they cut a tremendous tree right there. And it's about 11 feet across, and they chipped the stump. Well, it's fine. You know, you can't see it, but the apron of the driveway going into the parking lot is right here, and you can't pour concrete on top of an area where you chipped a stump, because eventually it's going to rot out, and then the driveway cave in. So, we're going to have to figure out some way to get this stump out of here. And that yellow marker right there is another problem. There's a large gas line right there, and it's kind of intertwined in the roots and the side of the stump. We're going to have to work around that. Anyway, that's the reason that picture was taken. Okay, Seth. All right, this is from the east looking west, and you can see that they're hauling in the select field, and you can't see it, but there's a grade stick over here, and the lot is four foot low on the west end. In other words, they got to bring it up, four feet. And the way they do that, they haul the dirt in, and they put it in in eight-inch increments. And every eight inches, they have to have a laboratory test to see how well, you know, it's being compressed and packed. So, that's what's going on right there, at that area. Okay, Seth. That's just four pictures of the select field that's being hauled in and compacted. Now, this tree right here is another little problem. That tree is on DOT property, the Department of Transportation. It's on Highway 80, not ours, but it's going to interfere with our parking lot. And today, I received a vegetation permit from DOT with permission to take this tree down. Of course, we'll be responsible for it. We have to take it down. And I've got somebody lined up to do it. Next Tuesday, the tree will be taken down and the stump chipped, because it's on the outside of the parking lot, and DOT only says it has to be suitable for molding. You could chip a stump and do that, but that tree will have to go. All right, this is down at Children. Remember, the road that we built to the Children Elementary, right here, it makes a loop, comes into the front of the school. As part of the project, we included a rolling gate, it's not an electronic gate, to secure the road when schools closed or at night. And I wanted you to see it there. The school officials, they're real proud of this, because they feel secure, you know. Nobody can, they open it up early in the morning, and then they close it, and they have it so you can keep whatever people from wandering around, driving around, and coming into the school. There'd be another gate just like this on the other end of the road, where the road breaks off into the parking lot up front of the school, there'd be two of them. And it was included in the project of the pre-k building, the Children Elementary. Okay? All right, there's the area where the new four classroom pre-k. This right here are the grade beams, the outer perimeter of the building. Some of them go across to support load-bearing walls. And right now, what they're doing is putting in a select field and trying to bling the dirt up to the top of the grade beams. And it's the same last thing there. They bring it up in 8-inch intervals, and then they have to do a confection test to see how, well, the laboratories, to see how well dirt. And things are moving along kind of slow because of the rain. It's wet. It's hard to do that kind of work. But, once we get this dirt in, next thing in, the plumbers will come in and rub in the plumbing, and they're telling me that hopefully by Thanksgiving, they'll have a slab. And once you get a slab, you can get on with the dirt, put it up. Okay, the press box, we'll be doing a substantial on this in a little while. It's completely finished, the first ballgame. This is carpet on the walls to help muffle the sound in the press box, and it's there. It looks nice. It's totally complete. All right, there are the new lights, and there's a picture of the press box with the L.J. Horstkerit signs. It has a timer on it. It comes on. I want you to see that. But all that's working well. The lights work well. That is it. Okay. Any question?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Payton. Ms. Duke, financials.
No.
Okay.
I have a quick question. Will that press box be named?
Not to my knowledge.
All right. That's pretty agreeable with the board?
Don't make a name everything.
I mean, I just wanted to know.
All right, Ms. Duke.
Okay. You have our three financial reports. The sales tax report for the month of October, sales tax collections compared to this month last year was up about 3.4% for the year. The first four months of the year collections, we are about 0.85% higher than the previous year's collections for the same four months. So, we are seeing a positive, it's small, but it is positive for our sales tax funds, so we hope this will continue or not grow as we move through the rest of this year. Then also, we have our financial report for the month of September. Basically, all funds combined, we have total fund balance of 29.16 million, and of that, we have an unassigned fund balance figure of 9.3 million. That is about 13.38% of what our annual budget expenditures are. We want that to be 15%, but that, in those circumstances, below 10, just because bond, to maintain bond ratings for the bonds that the school board has outstanding. And then, just to kind of note, we are, again, still waiting on the millages to come in in December, whenever those property taxes are collected, are started to being collected for the 2018 year, and we would like to, I'm sorry, 2019 tax year. And having said that, we are low in a few of our maintenance funds, which we reported that last month too as well, but we have grown. That gap has grown a little bit farther in our five-mill maintenance. We are about 600 and 6,000 in the red, having to transfer some funds over from general fund to cover that in that fund until those collections come in in December, which is a little bit higher than where we were at this point last year, that we had to cover. So, we're watching that, and we have our aging facilities needs and safety issues. You know, that's an ongoing issue there. Then we have our health plan update for the month of September. Overall, claims are down this month compared to the previous month. We have higher claims in the month of, let's see, in the month of September. Year-to-date, we are about even, or a little bit less than we were at this point last year as far as claims go, so we are really kind of in a good position with that. Total excess, net assets for the month of September is 61,000. And that is the financial reports for the month.
Question from Ms. Duke. Okay, thank you very much. Moving to unfinished business, approved policy manual revisions and deletions. Ms. question?
Yes, sir. Last month, you were given three policy revisions and one policy deletion, and this month, we would ask that you approve these. Your revisions were on school and student safety, emergency crisis management, and student fees, fines, and charges. And the deletion was threats of terrorism or violence. And we would ask that you approve those.
Okay. Heard the recommendation.
I see.
Motion by Lisa Best, seconded by Dr. Gillette. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Any question? Accept lowest bid for purchase of new buses. Mr. Casey.
As you remember, last month, we got permission to advertise for bids. We sent these out, followed bid law with that to our three Louisiana vendors, and also had that available online for anybody that needed to or felt like they wanted to bid on the project. You have the results of those bids, the tabulation in your papers there. The low bid came in with Scott Truck out of Monroe for international buses, five conventional diesel international buses, and we would like to recommend that we accept that low bid and proceed with the purchase of those five buses.
Okay. Heard the recommendation that we accepted a low bid from Scott Truck and LLC for $74,140 a piece. Okay, any questions, Mr. Casey, from the public? Ms. Smith?
Are those low bids meeting the specifications that you put up?
That's correct. Yeah, we always, as soon as we get the bids in, of course, take all that under advisement, and we can get back to the shop and have myself and my head mechanic review those specs to make sure they meet. They're required to put them in an order in their bid so that they match directly with our spec sheet. So, it's pretty quick to go through them and make sure everybody meets the bid requirements. We go through all three, not just the low one, to make sure everybody's met, and then we pull the low one after that to recommend to the board.
Thank you.
Do you have any internationals?
We do. We have a mix of all three brands, actually, but the last, two years ago, we bought seven internationals, so.
Okay.
We've had internationals, right. They had some issues in the years past, but we did some research before we put out, asked you guys to advertise for bids with other parishes that were running internationals, to make sure they had taken care of some of the problems that we had had in the past. And we were assured by those repairs and mechanics at those places that they were, had taken care of the factory, had taken care of the problems that were had in the past. That doesn't mean, of course, obviously, that there won't be new problems, if there are with any kind of new equipment, but we tried to do our due diligence to check on that before we went to the bid issue with that.
Okay, we got a question in the back.
I think that was my question. Would they be required to fix any reported problem with the bus, like if there's a reported problem with the bus that's noticeable by the person that's driving the bus? Would they be required to try to find that problem?
Now, we'll do the regular, I mean, there'll be some warranties on the buses, obviously, when they come new, but they won't be on the route, you know, originally, until they come through the process, as you know.
Yeah, right. And the only reason I was asking is because there was a problem that we reported that nobody seems to be able to find with the bus. That's why I asked the question.
That was on a bus from contract, right, from last year. Yeah, that's a separate issue.
A new bus?
Do I? I'm sorry.
It's the bus we own now, the new bus?
Right. That was a contract purchase bus from last year.
Oh, okay.
Right. So, and that's been reported to that company, and they're working on a fix for that.
Okay.
Good question. Thank you.
Motion by Danny Hancock, seconded by Debbie Agnew. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. We get the new bus. Mr. Casey? All right, moving into new business, consider adoption of cooperative endeavor agreement with the Ruston Lincoln Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Duke, are you hitting this up, or who is?
I'll do it. It's my shame the board's been approving cooperative endeavor with the Chamber of Commerce for the last few years, and this is just another renewal of that agreement in exchange for services that they provide to the school system. Just for your consideration, approve.
Okay. Question on this item, Ms. Duke?
What kind of services do, will they provide?
There's several things they do. Of course, they're our doctor's school partner with us, and so they do some advertising for us, and then we have agreements that allow us as a board to seek advice from them about anything to do with publicity. And so, we did some calculations, I don't have them in front of me, where the fees that we pay for that are substantially less than the services they provide. But I can give you a list of those, and things that the Chamber has done for us.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Motion by all the anchors, seconded by Lisa Best. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Duke. Change order number one on the Ruston High School press box. Mr. Payton.
Okay. Yes, this is change order number one for the press box, and as you know, we try to discourage having too many change orders in the project, but if you're going to have one, this is a good one to have, because we're not asking the board for money. We're actually going to get some money back. So, that's a good change order to have, if you're going to have to have one. Change order number one, the press box has three items. Item two has A, B, C, and D, and at this time, our architect is here, Mr. Walpo, as I'm here, will be glad to give any kind of explanation, answer any question that you have on any of the items there. You got a question?
Okay. Do you have these items before you should sit down?
Okay, if not, then a recommendation to the board is board approve change order number one for the Ruston High School press box. Items one, two, and three, reducing the contract price by $759 to $327.741, and adding 21 days to the contract time.
Okay. Heard the recommendation. Any questions, the public, board members?
Any question?
Motion by Lisa Best, seconded by George Mack. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Payton.
Thank you.
Consider a resolution authorizing membership and participation in the TIPS purchasing cooperative. Ms. Duke.
All right, thank you, Ms. Richmond. You have for you a resolution that we're asking for you to approve. This is to enable the school system to join the TIPS program, which is Reg 8 Education Service Center, interlocal purchasing system. It's out of Texas. It's a purchasing group, operates very similar to the state contract, Louisiana State Contract List. The state law of 2016 authorized school boards, only school boards, to participate in purchasing cooperatives if two or more school boards are a member of that cooperative. And so, in order for us to take advantage of that pricing, and we've made some purchases with some of the vendors in the past, and their prices due to appear to be lower than even our state contract pricing, so we would like to request permission that this resolution, which is the form that the Louisiana School Boards Association has prepared for school systems to adopt, since they were the ones who worked to initiate this in the legislature to make it happen in order to join. And I'll go ahead and read that since it's a resolution. Whereas Act 548 of the 2016 Regular Legislative Session amended with the public bid law to authorize public school districts to enter into agreements with purchasing organizations for purchasing materials, equipment, and supplies, and the installation thereof, whereas the Louisiana School Boards Association is negotiating an agreement with the Reg 8 Education Service Center, interlocal purchasing system, called TIPS. Whereas, the agreement between the LSBA and TIPS allows for any school district which is a current dues-paying member in good standing of LSBA to join TIPS and make purchases through TIPS under the authority of Act 548 at no cost to the school district. And whereas, the Lakeview Parish School District is a current dues-paying member in good standing of the LSBA, now therefore be it resolved that the Lakeview Parish School Board does hereby authorize the superintendent to enter into a membership agreement with TIPS, with the understanding that it does not obligate the Lakeview Parish School District to make purchases there through, but does provide another option under the Louisiana public bid law to make certain purchases. And be it further resolved that the superintendent communicate the procurement staff of the Lakeview Parish School District so that they are aware of additional procurement options.
Okay. Do you have a question for? Do you like this resolution? We renew, because we've been doing this every year, and our tip from the old on this.
I just have one question. Can you give us an example of what type of things we purchase?
One of the items I know that's come across that we've done for, I know this year has been some of the, I don't call them chrome books, the chrome books that we purchased. We can buy those off of state contract without having to bid, and in case, some cases, we spend over $30,000 in state funds. And we've been able to find a vendor on a TIPS contract that actually their product and the pricing is actually lower than what's on state contract.
Are some of our food service items to this project, you know?
Uh, this is separate from the school. This is a different one.
You need a motion approved? I'll make that motion for the, we approve the resolution for TIPS. Okay. Motion by David Gillette. Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir. What, if any kind of effect this will have on our local vendors, or will they be able to bid on the same product that you're looking for through the TIPS program?
If the dollar amount of purchase is in accordance with the state bid law, whether it's over $10,000, we have to get re-closed, or if it's over $30,000, and we have to bid, if they are on the TIPS cooperative list, and they have their pricing, and they're accepted by that program, then we could purchase from them if they're a local vendor. I mean, if it's under $10,000, we're not obligated to purchase with TIPS or on state contract. We can just outright purchase from our local vendor.
But they would have to be on TIPS list in order to participate?
For those purchases over $10,000.
All right, thank you.
Single purchases over $10,000, yes.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion by David Gillette, who's the second. Debbie Agnew, second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Permission to execute substantial completion documents on Ruston High School press box and light and pole project. Mr. Payton.
Okay. The background indicates there, combine the substantial completion of the press box and the light pole into one, and basically, this means that the project is finished. And it's ours, we're responsible for it. If the substantial is approved, only thing left is a few punch list items to complete, and they're not major. So, my recommendation to the board is to grant permission to authorize superintendents and architects to execute substantial completion documents for the Ruston High press box and the Ruston High School light and pole replacement project.
Okay. Questions of Mr. Payton, of Ms. Anderson, but Ms. Smith?
You say that they are not big in your opinion. Kind of what kind of items are we talking about on the punch list?
Mr. Walpo, you want to comment on that?
Like on the pole project, he's got a pile of dirt and debris he needs to haul off. He's got some barriers, curb barriers that we put around the pole that he hadn't painted yet, in case he painted them today. And so, they're very minor.
All right, thank you.
Heard the recommendation excepted substantial completion. Motion by Danny Hancock, seconded by Mike Farmore. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Permission to advertise for bid for the Ruston High School switchgear exchange. Mr. Ricky Anderson.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mitchum. My department has requested permission to move forward with the exchange of this switchgear system at Ruston High as our facilities age. We're going to see more and more of this. The exist, in your background information, the existing main switchgear in Ruston High School was installed in '67. It's 52 years old, and I've listed some of the components of the switchgear system. And this switchgear that we're talking about, and it supplies 75% of Ruston High School's electrical needs, including the HVAC system, the three chillers, and the cafeteria. So, this is gonna be a major project that we're gonna be, uh, undertaking if, if you give us permission to do that. Uh, what brought our attention to this, recently, we, uh, we had a 600 amp breaker trip and twice in a 24-hour period, and it was controlling one of the chillers. And I have with me tonight, I have Mickey Murphy. Uh, Mickey is, uh, our electrician. And, uh, he's, he can help us with any questions that you may have. And I have Mark Millstead, coordinator of auxiliary, with us tonight. But, um, we replaced that breaker, they're Federal Pacific boxes, they no longer make those. So, we had to have one made up, um, and it was $1,800 to just replace that one breaker. Uh, to prevent future outage is caused by the failure of this system, we need to move forward with this exchange. Uh, board members, we're looking at approximately $225,000 to $250,000 on this job. It will take us at least three months. We need equipment on site the day the students walk out of school in May. And we would hopefully, um, be finished when teachers walk back in in August. And this is the, the main hub, the electrical hub that runs Ruston High, installed in 67.
So, hit that, hit that one out today?
If.
What will be the result of that?
I, I'm gonna let Mr. Murphy speak. Mr. Murphy, come soon. Yeah. I, I want him to, to speak to that. If it, if it tripped today, if it went out today, what are we looking at?
Well, nobody knows future, uh, how many students do we have there?
1,300.
1,300 students. It would, uh, ba, basically, you would displace 1,300 students. Because you would, you would just be in a mad scramble to try to find, and not even though you'd find temporary gear or temporary power big enough to run that. So, you would be down basically the oldest part of the school, the cafeteria. And so, that, that would be the worst-case scenario, if it happened at an inconvenient time during school, and, and then you're, you got them.
And you'd be, you could be down approximately three months. So, if that happened tomorrow, then we're looking at November, December, January. We're looking at trying to put something together for all of those students. And so, we, we, we try to be very, well, we are very proactive with our maintenance. And, uh, this is something that, that needs our attention.
What, what activities are going on at the high school June, July, August that would be affected regardless?
Well, they do have some summer camps there, but it's, uh, it's, you know, not large enough for the kids there. And so, having no air conditioning there would obviously be a problem. But many summer camps, cheer camps.
And that's just the, the old part of the school?
The main facility.
It is. It's, it's the park that was built in 38.
Yes, sir.
Auditorium, school, cafeteria, that area. And so, I'm, I'm asking the board for permission to move forward. Do you have any other questions that might stick you with? Okay.
Motion that we move forward this request?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Debbie Gillette, second, second by Danny Hancock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries.
To give you an idea, James and I were looking at each other, that was our graduation year at Ruston High. I think we got our monies one night.
1938 or 19? All right, thank you, Ms. Tedders.
Yes, sir.
All right. Board of directors, Mr. Smith.
Yes. Want to remind you all that we do have the, uh, annual convention coming up in February. We talked about it briefly at the beginning, but February 16, 17, and 18, again, that's a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, around President's Day. So, if you make plans to go to that, that would be great. Uh, secondly, we're working on a special head advisory council. This has been mandated by the, uh, State of Louisiana that every school board have an open meeting special head advisory council. This council must consist of 50% parents, 25% central office people, and 25% school personnel. So, it's not a majority, parents. But the purpose of it is to air issues that might, uh, be something that needs to be brought to the attention of the superintendent and the board related to special education issues. And so, uh, we're in the process of working on that. Uh, that has to be in place by January of 2020. And then you're required to have minimally three meetings per year. And so, uh, we're planning a, once we get it in place, uh, we'll have a meeting in February, probably one in April. And then we'll start on a three-per-year, school-year cycle, uh, in order for us to meet the requirements of the state. So, I see it as a positive. It is a way for us to have a better communication with these, with parents and special needs kids. The 50% that is, that is parents, they have to be parents of special needs kids. So, if you know anybody that's interested, there is an application form at the very bottom of Lincoln Parish School Board website. So, I would love to have, uh, anybody apply that meets that qualification. Uh, thirdly, we're gonna have a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the STEM building on, uh, November 14th. Be at 10 o'clock in the morning, so we're looking forward to that. One of the delights of that would be not just the STEM center, but we're gonna have some of our French emerging kids there. And they will be conducting a little lesson in French, as they are not, want to do. I was in a classing the other day with them, and the entire instruction in the math, uh, class that these kindergartners are in was conducted in French. And so, the kids had no problem understanding that. She would tell them what to do, they did exactly what she said. She even got on to a couple of them in French, they did exactly what she said. She was not messing around, exactly. She was teaching standards, uh, as a form of eureka math for those children. And so, they very, very understood. It was quite entertaining to watch. Uh, also, I want to mention to you that tomorrow, and I've communicated this to you, board members, that tomorrow, our district performance scores and school performance scores will come out. And we will have the data that indicates how well our schools are doing compared to other schools in the district based on a rubric that's been around for a long time. Now, they changed that, how they scored that, uh, beginning last year, this will be the second year of that. And then 2021, 22, they will change it again. And then in 2025, they will change it again. And so, we keep struggling, but, uh, the results for us are very positive. Uh, we will, uh, be one of the highest-scoring districts again in Louisiana. Once again, we will be the highest-performing district in North Louisiana, there is no doubt about that. I've seen the preliminary data. Uh, schools have done well, and, uh, as the information I shared with you today, you know, the schools that are performing to a very high level. So, the nice thing about that is, and philosophically, I have a little problem with that, because you talk about a C school, people say, well, it's just an average school. But I want to tell you, we've got some C schools in this district that put my children and grandkids in the morning. They're that good. And so, it's kind of a, a misrepresentation of what these, uh, schools are actually achieving. So, we will have A schools, of course, but we will have some C schools that are just great schools. Uh, when you start with a group of kids, and that group of kids has to grow a certain amount, and they come to you with a wide range of background, and you have to get them all together. It takes several years to make that happen. And so, the front of that is born by elementary. And so, finally, you, you see that come together junior high, then you get to Ruston High School, you see an A performing school. But those kids have come to us through grade 11 and 12. And they're well-prepared when they come to us. So, I don't want anybody to be misled about what a district or school performance score really means. You can have a C and perform at a very high level. So, uh, keep that in mind. We'll get that information tomorrow, and of course, we'll be sharing with the media tomorrow. In our December board meeting, we will recognize the principles. We have five principles that we'll recognize because of the growth of their schools, or that they are maintaining As. And of course, we've done that to last year. Also, we want to remember that, uh, with the changes to the proposed insurance system for our retirees, we have promised them an informational, uh, meeting. We had one civic center that will have a, a meeting where they can come individually and see what their, what the insurance will pay, if their medicines are on it, uh, what hospitals are on it or not on it. But, uh, the way it's set up now, that really doesn't matter because they have open access to just about everything. So, that will be conducted, uh, this month in Title I facility next door, the 19th to the 21st. And any retiree can come in and sit down face-to-face and talk one-on-one with a representative of the cross membership. Uh, recently, we've had two school systems, the last two weeks, come visit us because of our implementation of a curriculum. Uh, we're, we're implementing the new jump math program, and, uh, we had one of our neighboring parish came in to see how it's implemented out of Shutter High School, Shutter Elementary School. And then today, we had another parish come in to see implementation of our, our guidebook ELA component at Ruston Elementary. Ms. Sebastian, I think you'll verify, they did a super job over there today, so.
It was an excellent job, excellent job.
And, uh, the neighboring parish is very pleased to see how it's really supposed to be done. We don't nominate ourselves with these visits. People in the State Department call and say, would you show somebody how to do so? Of course, we're glad to do that. So, uh, kudos to Ruston Elementary, kudos to Shutter Elementary for the implementation of the curriculum that we are going through right now. And, Ms. President, leave this off.
Okay. Comment from board members? Ms. Lisa.
Make the motion, Ms. President.